Okay, welcome to the Asheville City Work Session. This is our Facility Studies Work Session and I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager, Debra Campbell.
Thank you, excuse me. Thank you and good evening. Today, we are going to talk about a comprehensive facility study that has recently wrapped up. But I want to put this in context, particularly for those who serve on the Policy, Finance, and HR Committee. We talked about and presented the beginning phases of a capital planning process and we talked about a lot of initiatives and studies and things that were underway that we hope will provide you with good information to consider the capital budget and even potentially a GL bond going forward. So this is a study that will be presented in two parts. So we have another work session in November and this will be the first that we will kick off an effort to look at our city assets and facilities. And it's bittersweet, unfortunately. There are lots of needs, but we think we have a way that we can address those needs, but it's going to take time. And that's why we are and have initiated a much longer term look at capital needs and facility needs. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Walter Eer, who's going to provide you with the presentation. And I think Walter, you may or may not have the consultant join in? Okay, great. All righty, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Debra. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Manager, Staff. My name is Walter Eer. I'm the Building Construction Program Manager in the Capital Projects Department. As Debra mentioned, this is the first of two work sessions in which we'll discuss the results of the Comprehensive Facility Study. Joining me today is Crete and Associates, the comprehensive part of the Comprehensive Facility Study, and City Staff as well, in case you have any questions that may need further explanation. We have question breaks built into the slides, so I ask that you hold your questions until that point, but certainly if you have a burning question, I'm happy to answer if you want to break in. Let's get started. Capacity: We're a city that's growing and continues to grow. The city will need additional space for staff and services to meet that growth. Condition: We've inherited a number of facilities from past generations. They're showing their age and we need to commit to maintenance, to maintaining those facilities until we can replace them. And then consistent capital. Council has a number of plans and priorities that are drivers for needing high-functioning facilities. In turn, those require reliable streams of capital funding to make those plans a reality. A recap of how and why we got here. Typically, communities do these types of assessments every five years. The City of Asheville did ours, our last one in 2017. It wasn't comprehensive. It was conditioned only at that time, but it is time to refresh that plan. It forms the basis for long-range capital planning for facilities, helps us to plan, prioritize, and sequence capital plans, as well as map out our future vision for planning. We base this study on what Alexandria, Virginia did and theirs in 2015, as well as what the county recently did in 2021. We have a number, again, of aging facilities and investment needs with lots of questions surrounding them. Overall, throughout the city inventory, we have about 1.6 million square feet of facilities and structures. This study specifically addressed the, an assessment of about a million square feet of those facilities. We start with our why. Our facilities serve those who serve our city and the city needs high-functioning facilities, again, to serve the council's organizational priorities. Further recap of how we got here. A little over a year and a half ago, we gave Council a preview of the study. Later that year, Council adopted and approved two contracts, one with Brightly Software for the Facility Condition Assessment and the Capital Predictor Software, and Crete and Associates, again, the comprehensive part of the Comprehensive Facility Study. All along the way, we engaged with departments to ensure that the study aligned with department, organization, and council priorities. The study results will feed into this year's capital budget and beyond. You'll hear more about that process in the Capital Work Session led by Finance in December. Here are the components and how we ran the study. We start with growth forecasting, which Crete and Associates led concurrently. We did the Facility Condition Assessment, where we go facility by facility, checking out the conditions. Again, Crete and Associates did the space needs assessment and the location and sustainability analysis, took all of that information, plugged it into Facilities, Site-Specific, and Capital Plans, aligned those with council priorities, into an actionable 20-year facilities master plan. Today is Part One, in which we'll dig the hole. Next month in November, we'll plan to climb out. Any questions?
I'm just glad the pinto stayed on the song.
Had to find a place.
That is the actual bell, isn't it?
That is the bell.
Yeah.
It works. All right. Beginning with growth and space needs planning. Population growth was the basis for and baseline for staff growth. We used a number of established sources for population growth at the federal, state, and local level. Projected the city growth will be from the 2020 Census, 94,000 population, to 130, potentially, and based on the projection in 20 years. The result for planning purposes is that we'll need potentially 43% space growth in 20 years. And this includes flexible and hybrid work. Specific to space needs, we addressed mostly the administrative and office needs within the departments listed. As we review terms and we go into some more detailed slides, we'll just review the terms. So from the smallest to largest, net assignable area is one office. Net usable area is an entire suite like this one on the fourth floor. This is the Finance Department here on the left, and then on the right, this is the Parks and Rec Suite. I'm sorry, I actually have it reversed. Parks and Rec on the left, Finance on the right. The gross area is everything else. So you can't assign the main circulation area, or the elevators, or stairwells. That's the gross area. First, we have City Hall. There's a lot going on here, so first I'll say, City Hall, all departments not named Fire, Police, Public Works, Development Services, and CREF. All departments not named those have an administrative base, home base, in City Hall. So now we move to the slide, and I ask you follow with me this way. So the existing gross area, current area occupied, today's space need, and then we'll go down from the future area down. So 91,000 square feet is the total of all spaces in City Hall that you can count under roof. The current area occupied, which is the sixth floor and down, is almost 54,000 square feet. And then today's space need is almost 56,000 square feet. So today, we're in a space deficit. Not by much, but we are in a space deficit. This is, again, using flex work. In 20 years, we're projecting a need of almost, just over 64,000 square feet, with a total City Hall net usable area of 65,000 square feet. It's a lot of numbers. What you need to know is that in 20 years, we could occupy, we have a technical surplus of space for the projected future for the departments assigned in City Hall. That assumes that we will use the seventh and eighth floors, which are currently vacant.
So when you're talking about this growth, and you were saying earlier in a slide that there's a 43% projected space need growth, is that, how much does that correlate with just a growth in number of staff, right? Because that's really, is the space growth correlated to the number of staff, right? Because it's humans using space. Are we really going to be growing by 700 people in the next 20 years? New staff people?
So specific to those departments. So those are, these are mostly office personnel. I don't think the actual number, we can get back to the actual number of growth, and we did do a person-by-person assessment. Each space, you know, one person gets a certain type of space, another person gets a certain type of space, and then we multiply it. I can show you the tables. I'm happy to share that with, with Council as a follow-up to this. So yes.
But that's your question? That's the basis for the growth projection is staff? Is that your, is that your question?
That's correct.
Yeah, that does answer my question, and I guess, what am I wrestling with? That sounds like a huge staffing growth, especially for folks who are going to be desk employees. Like that would, I'm just trying to track, right? I worked here 10 years ago, and we have the same number of employees, but for like, a little bit, right? So like, in a 10-year period, we haven't changed the organization side. So I just want to make sure we kick the tires that, that's a calculation that makes sense logically, but like, organizationally, is our organization going to grow to a 2,500-person or 2,000-person organization? I just want to make sure that the fundamental basis is on track with revenue and organizational growth, that we aren't overestimating things.
Do you think, is that the projection, that number of employees? Because it's only...
43% would be, and we're 1,200 now, so let's say it's 500 more employees in 20 years.
That seems like it makes sense to me, because we're so understaffed right now. We could have, because we've hit a high of 1,250. We're just understaffed currently.
I mean, I agree that we're understaffed. Is it just practical?
One of the discussions that happened was that there was a decline, I think, I think you left right around 09 to 12.
09, yes. We had to do a 10% cut across each.
So there was a decline, and then we're catching back up. That was part of the discussion as well, is that we are playing catch-up. As well, there's been growth, you know, a sustainability department didn't exist, you know, I think you were the first. So, Debra as well.
And I also think it is the appropriateness and adequacy of the space. So right now, unfortunately, we have people working in conditions that are not the, what we would all be proud of for our employees. So I don't know if you can make the direct correlation between employees and the space, again, because we're trying to create more, I don't want to use humane, but I do appropriate...
Better work settings.
It does appear too, that in this particular example of City Hall, the outcome of the math is that we can fit it in City Hall. So even if we're overshooting the employee growth, we're still retrofitting City Hall for future growth. It's not like we're saying, let's go get a second building, which we will be saying in some of these other examples.
Right, that's why I just wanted to like, get clear on the fundamental equation we're using.
I agree with you, Maggie, that 500 seems high, seems unlikely, but maybe, who knows? And since it's not going to say, go buy us a new building, I'm not that worried about it.
And again, it's not necessarily the direct correlation with the numbers of employees.
Yeah, I guess just my input would be, anytime you make a calculation like this, there's a range, right? And we can be very conservative or very liberal in like, the future of work is not going to be desks in expensive downtown offices. And so, that are very expensive to remodel and do all this. So just as, as we continue to refine and iterate, I encourage us to be thoughtful about that. And I, we need appropriate workspaces, I get that. So I don't need to belabor this anymore, I just wanted to make sure I was locking in the fundamentals.
Yes. We will get the exact numbers and show the basis of growth. And I think that, to Council Turner's point, and yours as well, that we're not buying new buildings for those that are assigned to this building. That's the long and short.
I mean, that...
It happens later, though.
Well, are we at least going to get an office in all this? Because right now, I mean, it'd be pretty nice enough to have to go to coffee shops.
Yeah, we did do a little bit of that assessment as well, of having elected officials, more of the elected officials have an office.
That was, back when they redid some parts of this office, that was discussed then too. I will say, I mean, it is striking, visiting other cities, and even Buckham County has elected to build new facilities for the executive function, and, and they're a lot easier to manage from a safety standpoint, for managing public meetings. There, there's just a lot of benefits to, so it's, we want to honor this building. We have one of the, I think, the best City Hall in the state of North Carolina. It just is really expensive and difficult to make work in a modern environment, so that, that's a real challenge. But if you go to Durham, or Charlotte, or you go to, across the street to Buckham County, you know, they're in a new, a new building to host this.
It's probably worth mentioning too, since, like we saw with, I guess it was Harrah's or Thomas Wolfe, you know, the cost to maintain and repair it is so much that sometimes the debt to actually improve it is about the same.
Yeah.
So it might, I assume we'll see stuff like that at some point.
Yes.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you. Along the way, we'll need to reconfigure, as we've mentioned, spaces to meet modern work standards. There are situations throughout the city where multiple employees are cramped and, thrown together in small cramped workspaces, and then spaces where former closets or spaces not intended for office had a desk thrown in, and then voila, you have an office space. These are not employer-of-choice standards. Again, key takeaways for City Hall, the building to sustain our 20-year future growth for the departments assigned, that assumption makes the assumption that we are going to continue to use or occupy the seventh and eighth floors, and then renovate spaces inside of City Hall. Same template for the municipal building. Gross area of the building is 80,400 square feet. Current area occupied is 58,000 square feet. The current space need for the departments assigned, I meant to mention departments assigned, most people know, Fire Station Headquarters, Fire Station One, and Police Headquarters. So for those departments and uses, total space needs is 71,000 square feet. Again, space deficit currently, future space deficit, 75,000 square feet. Current net usable area is what we're occupying, 58,000 square feet. We have a future space deficit. So the key takeaways for the municipal building are that the departments currently need space, that either the Fire or Police Department will need to find, need to acquire additional space to serve them for the next 20 years. There are existential questions about the future purpose of this building, and that is something that's an ongoing discussion.
So, repeat question, is this derived from personnel growth, or what is this?
Yes, it's the same. Personnel growth, and I think that with this one specifically, with Fire and Police Departments, there was significantly less remote work available for the types of work that they do.
And in fact, it's probably the opposite, increased living facilities and kitchens.
Yes, exactly.
And I assume we'll get more information than just that, so, okay.
Yeah, we do have, the study that is fairly lengthy, we'll have more detail.
Yes, we'll provide it. And we'll provide specifically the tables. There are some finer points in the, you know, the larger study that are, we're still fine tuning for the next presentation, but we'll give you specifically the slides and the basis for those calculations.
And for the Muni, like at a high level, we have those three main uses, right? Station One, HQ for Fire, and HQ for Police. Like, are they equally underspaced? Or is it really, we've been crunching and the firefighters like, sleep in bunk beds of three, or like, do we have a sense of, is it like, the living quarters? Because I feel, I have a huge sensitivity to public servants who have to live in public facilities that wouldn't meet what we think is comfortable.
We are going to provide a, or offer to provide a tour for Council members to show the types of living quarters that are, that they're in. I would say the, again, the configuration of the space that they're currently living in, Station One and a couple other stations are not optimal. But from a space need standpoint at the municipal building, it's actually mostly Police. The Police Department actually has the higher need of additional space.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Is there a conversation about using this one differently for city purposes already happening?
Yes, there's the Pack Place, I don't know the exact name. Thank you, Pack Place Visioning Plan, yes, there you go.
Okay.
It is curious to me, like, we're talking about Thomas Wolfe, and it's so close to the interstate, it's just curious to me about multi-solving. I don't know.
This seems like a...
I mean, it's, a lot of the concerns I hear from folks is when they have to leave here, they have to get through downtown, right? If we look at like, the multiple issues that we're going to hear about later today is all the people who have to use our roads, and our first responders are some of them. So maybe it's good to have some folks downtown and some folks closer to interstate access. I just, we haven't had a full conversation about how we use Thomas Wolfe and the Civic Center, and I'm just curious about its proximity to the interstate.
But are you talking about like, to house emergency services there, potentially?
Or split it.
Because it's not, oddly though, it's not near the entrance ramp or exit ramp. You got to kind of go around. But, you know, and Station One responds to the geographical area, think of downtown, it used to do Monford, but now Broadway is going to do Monford.
Right, from, I shouldn't go too far into talking about fire, because I'm not an expert on fire, but from the study, the Fire Station One actually responds to more, I think, central and east.
Well, and it's worth mentioning now, in light of some of these discussions around downtown and old substations, that one of the things I keep hearing is that we'd like more locations where public safety are stationed. So as we, I'm just sharing that input I've heard recently as we talk about needing more space.
We will talk about that more in November. Happy to bring that up.
Yeah, it seems like more smaller, not less bigger.
I mean, that's my first take, but I really haven't heard enough or seen enough, so...
So again, we'll bring it up in November, but what was interesting about some of the things that we learned, and sort of generally understand, and you would think you would understand in going into this, is that Police is more centrally focused, all of those support services, forensics, evidence. So their priorities focus more on increasing space in the Headquarters Building. Fire Department was more focused on increasing the services, because they provide services mostly from the stations. So where those are at, you know, there is some fine tuning to be done with a few of the stations, but improving, as you had mentioned, Council Omen, the, the living quarters of those stations was their priority.
Interesting.
And then Public Works. Again, same format, and I'll start with, in 1993, Public Works Building was built exclusively for the Public Works Department. Today, it houses Public Works, the Development Services Department, and a handful of other divisions that work for other departments. This slide and the space needs will cover Public Works Department only. Again, the template gross area, and this is office space only, obviously, 27,000 square feet gross area. Public Works occupies largely the second floor of Public Works Building, which is, their occupied area is 9,500 square feet. Their current space need is 17, almost 18,000 square feet. Their future 20-year space need is 19,000 square feet. So we are in a rather large space deficit currently and future. So for key takeaways on this one, Public Works could sustain their office growth needs, but not their site needs. We have done a study and have fine-tuned that study through this process. Their site needs are 22 acres to handle all of their garbage trucks, site circulation. Today's modern standards of doing these public services, we currently occupy seven acres of contiguous public workspace, and they have one satellite, office for these satellites, site location for this is just two acres. So if you put that together, it's only nine, it doesn't quite meet the site needs.
And they want 22?
Require 22.
What does that mean, require?
Trucks. We're going to park all these vehicles.
You mean, in 20 years, we assume this much truck growth based on population?
And we probably need...
Yes, and today's growth. Actually, I'll get today's site need as well.
I got, again, this, the, this fundamental number that we're getting to, and maybe I just need to comb through your numbers, but like, if you look at the amount of office employees versus field employees in different departments, that is an enormous amount of growth in what will ultimately be office employees for the Public Works Department? More, I don't know...
DSD is in, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We could use like, 30 more plan reviewers.
I mean, I'm, maybe I'm just not used to like, dreaming that we could actually have the staff that we want.
It's DSD also.
No, this is public, their Public Works Department's need is 17,000 today, 19,000 in the future. They, they've been asked to give up space, a significant amount of, they do not, again, this whole space in the first floor was, they just don't have a split, a space to congregate all employees. It's difficult for them to get just their, we still need to do face-to-face engagements, right? You can't, with field employees, you can't do a virtual meeting, or it's not effective to do a virtual meeting in that way. As an example, you know, this square right here, which is green and yellow, used to all be yellow, and used to be an all-hands meeting space for employees. They currently meet in a garage in the, what's called the E-Building, which is acoustically, I think you've been there. It's not optimal for that. The space also has not really been updated, it's, acoustically, it's not great as well. Again, the E-Building is certainly not made for that. So it becomes, it provides a management challenge, not insurmountable, but it provides a management challenge for the Public Works Department.
That doesn't sound ideal, and I hear you, that face-to-face is needed. I guess I'm just curious, as we're seeing trends in office spaces decline, what are some multi-solving investments that we could make? And it would help me to understand, how much of our big rooms are at capacity? Like, are there spaces, like community centers, that we could use that would solve the same purpose, that we're already upfitting for being able to have community meetings, like, let's say at the Grant Center, and they're going to be all set up with TVs? And, I mean, if we're going to be making that investment, can it be a multi-solution?
Right. So pre-pandemic, even pre-pandemic, before this partition was made, there were challenges in, it's just time, right? You, Public Works wants people on the road serving citizens. So when we have to do an all-hands meeting that is at another location away from their equipment and vehicles, that's more downtime. So if we build that in to their daily work schedule, that's just time that they're not serving, or they have to make up otherwise either overtime, or if you had more personnel that could handle that type of increased, essentially workload for training or other purposes.
And I didn't wait till your question break, and I'm sorry. You asked that.
Oh, I interrupted a lot.
And maybe, maybe it's that Public Works isn't the group that needs to be part of the multi-solving conversation. I'm just thinking about resource mapping in general, not picking on Public Works.
Certainly, yes. You bring up a very good point, yes.
And just for clarification, because I think I may have misinformed Councilman. This is just Public Works. It's not...
Not DSD.
DSD and any other, other administrative groups that are housed in Public Works.
That's correct. I'm only showing the Public Works need here in this 19,000 future, future need.
That's kicking the other uses out?
Oh.
Okay. That's a little different.
Maybe.
I mean, I, you know, I think the conversation around the working assumptions that are built into this in terms of the number of personnel is important, but it's seem, like, even if we assume there's no additional staff in 20 years, I mean, our, our facilities are, are not appropriate for delivering the services that we're trying to deliver. So we've got, you know, so I think, we know we have to fix them or build new ones, so it would be problematic to me if we didn't kind of make assumptions that are on the bigger side as we do this, since it's so rare that we do do it. So I mean, that's kind of a difficult problem. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. And I think of like, the bigger picture of like, where are these facilities located? What...
Oh yeah, no, I definitely think that's part...
I just want to make sure we're not looking at this in silos from different departments.
It's just difficult, because it's, these are, these are, you know, we're, like at my law firm, we have a 40,000 square foot building. We've been doing all this research about what would the next firm look like, and we're looking at models in the private sector that have flex spaces and sharing, and we've, we've decided we can get ourselves down to say, 25,000 square feet. But we could also, we're mobile. If in 20 years, the site doesn't work, we would just move to another facility. It's very, for a city, you, you don't exactly have that option. You've got to, you've got to have some working assumptions as you plan for multiple years ahead. It's, I don't envy your task, it's very challenging. I mean, also, if we were doing this study five years ago, we would be working with totally different assumptions. I mean, lucky, sort of, and silver lining to our delay, delay in handling these buildings is now we've gone through COVID, and we know there are different ways to think about how workers work.
And the beauty of this, in terms of the long-range planning, is that every... And and the beauty of this in terms of the long-range planning is that every five years, we ought to be updating this information. And adjusting for what what is current today. And how do we meet our current needs and future needs? But it's an iterative process, and this is the information that we have now, kind of the projections and the needs. And in a couple of years, we definitely will come back and revisit.
In starting this at 2022, we only had a two-year sample size for what, you know, how hybrid work might work. And actually, it was, you know, one of those was fully remote, so really one year of starting to do hybrid work before we, you know, as we tried to develop standards. I will say that there there are department, division managers that are giving up office space to first, to frontline supervisors to make some of these spaces work. So Councilwoman, I hear it, and we'll provide those numbers so that it it makes sense.
You should have done more on the how dire it is currently. No, I'm just kidding.
You're telling, you're painting the picture now for us. I'm definitely not trying to undermine that we need it, I just am processing and wanting to make sure that the baseline is starting from there. And it would be helpful too to know like what was our total employee count 20 years ago and 10 years ago? Like those just milestones would help me keep pace with the learning that you're already doing.
We have that.
So that would be nice if that's easy to pull.
What about the things that are more in the dream side? Like when we did, looked at solar and said, well, solar might cost $5 million, but the roof to hold it, it's going to cost 11. Is that kind of stuff in here?
This is in here, we'll get to it.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, again, key takeaways, Public Works can sustain the office growth, but not the site growth. Non-Public Works Departments may need to acquire additional space in the 20-year future. And again, existential questions about the future of this building and this site specifically. We can skip this question break. Unless you have, I'm happy to answer any others. All right, thanks, we'll keep it moving. All right, commitment to, we'll turn the page, go to the next chapter, commitment to maintenance and sustainability. We evaluated the facility condition of nearly a million square feet of facilities valued at nearly half a billion dollars and received a grade of C. Not great, not horrible, it's about what we expected. We took this information and plugged it into the capital predictor software and produced a maintenance model. It's a busy chart, and I'll help you focus on the important numbers that are relevant to today. $1 million is our current facilities funding. That covers general fund facilities for operations, craft facilities, and excludes Water Resources Department facilities. As you can see from this graph, roughly in the 13 to somewhere in the 20-year mark, all facilities' assets are in a nearly failed state.
They are uninhabitable, the time, okay.
The deep code enforcement of itself.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes, so in what we need, what the city needs to maintain existing service levels of replacement of assets, et cetera, maintains $3.5 million. This is a maintenance-only model, it does not include growth, improvements, additions, or building replacements. This is version 1.0 of this model, the software can do a lot of things, and we hope for it to to help us in future forecasting. But this is the baseline, this is the first go at it.
But let's, let's just make clear, the 3.5 simply is status quo, C. I just wanted to make sure.
But that's not what we're doing now, right? We're only doing a million.
Correct.
Right.
That's roughly 800K, a little over 800K for general fund facilities.
And you don't bond that.
And about 200 for the Harris Cherokee Center.
Yep.
What a million-dollar budget does is we're often confronted with this type of decision where we decide whether or not we're going to keep something dry or keep it warm. And challenges with averages. Averages can be deceiving, the highs wash out the lows, and assets will fail before their scheduled replacement. As a result, we'll need to invest more upfront to catch up with deferred maintenance. Key takeaways, again, a million dollars is insufficient, 3.5 is what we need to maintain our current service levels in existing facilities. And again, the maintenance model only covers maintenance and existing footprint, no growth, improvement, replacement.
I just want to ask a question, this may not, on that same, wait a minute.
Back to the, you want the chart with the money.
Well, yeah, yeah, no, no, I just wanted to check with the pool situation, it was a phase two. On, on, you said phase two at the Grant Center where you have lap pool, what what exactly, that photo?
No, we just did that.
They're saying, doesn't this feel good, it was high, but hey, look over here, that's not so good.
Oh, uh, we're here.
That's a rendering.
I I know, but it's a lap, it's not what they put in, I was just wondering about, yeah, that situation, where did that come from?
That's not what we did.
My apologies.
No, that is the.
No, we didn't do a lap pool.
That's not.
That's not what we did.
That's so weird, because that looks, it's not the same.
That looks like a real picture of the, does it, does it look like what you saw?
No, yeah, you're right.
Are you sure?
I'm certain.
No, that's not.
We do not have a lap pool.
We don't, we don't have a pool like that.
I think we're losing the point, but.
I know, I know we're missing a point, but I, what he said that phase two.
Yeah, like maybe upgrade that picture.
I will upgrade that picture, I do apologize.
I just want to make sure that we're moving toward.
That's a very good point, good eye, thank you.
I think it is. I just want to make sure we weren't playing off moving towards that.
It does say three feet eight inches, so.
I will literally go take a picture for you.
Okay, thanks, okay, great, I just wanted, okay.
I apologize. Good eye.
Go take a picture, who's that?
I mean, the people in community will be jumping up and down.
Yes, yes, it's a very good point.
Um, so this is the maintenance model. The need is more than we have, not surprising. And that's very different than our capital budget, which would do actual, let's overhaul the HVAC because the life cycle of that element of the facility is done, right? Like, where's the line when we're talking about maintenance, right, versus real capital repairs to our actual facilities?
So again, version 1.0 includes everything.
Amazing.
Right, and so currently, this million dollars is our capital maintenance. So that's what we use for boiler replacement, roof replacement, et cetera.
Lights, paint, everything.
Right, the 3.5 million includes some of the smaller stuff, but, you know, largely it's it's capital.
Okay. This is amazing progress, by the way, 1.0, like, it's just such a leveling up the quality of management and like professionalism to take care of these facilities. We've done such a good job for a long time, and our trades workers who've been caring for our buildings and then busting their butts forever with a shoestring budget. But I feel like this type of work is really helping them do even better because we need to be investing more and making the case for it, so I love it.
Yes, thank you.
I wish the numbers were different, but it doesn't surprise me, and that's our role, right, is to follow through with giving the numbers we need to take care of our stuff.
Thank you. Moving on to sustainability. In the sustainability assessment, we took a sample of 13 buildings, which is a representative cross section, cross-section of the types of buildings that we occupy and maintain. Offices, community centers, and 24-hour facilities like Fire Department's. We applied three sustainability models, good, better, best, and compared them to our baseline maintenance. The result is simply that the, you know, many of our buildings are so old that the return on investment is simply not good. We can make investments where it makes sense or consider replacement of facilities to meet our sustainability goals. As a case study toward that end of the type of facility that we assessed, I present to you the Oakley Complex, which includes a fire station, police station, library, and community center. In 1965, the building was built as a fire station, Asheville Library Community Center. One of the interesting things that we learned in this was that Asheville owned and operated our own library system. That's why you see a handful of those sites where the library, fire station, and community center are built together. In 2010, there was an existing house there that served as a police station, and in 2010, we took ownership of a AB Tech project house, which then replaced the same footprint. As an evaluation of this type of facility, the capacity for growth is low in their existing footprint and on the site for growth. Condition is we've maintained things as they break, it does need a couple more maintenance items fairly soon. But from a sustainability standpoint, we have, at least in the 1965 building, not a lot has been done since 1965. Still concrete block walls, not insulated. If we were to insulate those, fur them out, you would take away the space from the living quarters inside, whether it's the the fire bay or the living quarters, community center, library. So that reduces capacity. And then modernizing it with electrification instead of natural gas, it's simply not made for that. So the return on investment is not good. We'll talk more about the cost to rebuild and envision a new master plan for this site in November.
So you're preparing us for a example of where we might build an entirely new facility, because we have the land.
That's correct.
And the state of that facility is, is, yeah, I would concur with that.
And this is where, right, this is where it makes sense to not invest in this facility. We we keep the maintenance of the facility going and then plan for a longer-term plan to to invest and replace, yes.
And I feel like for the environmental sustainability of it, it also makes a lot of sense. I know, oh, we, we were just in a committee meeting, Kim, and you brought up resilience hubs. I know it's something Shiniko's led on and talked about, something I'm interested in, and especially when you're looking at facilities in community. The initial purpose, the use, was definitely different in 1965. And so if we're really looking at the use and we want a space that can be a resilience hub, that can be as sustainable as possible, be off-grid, that type of thing. Retrofitting for that purpose is good public money towards bad, and so I think that makes sense. I mean, the the one overlay would be getting real on how many of these will we replace over the time, what the real 20-year plan is. And if we're waiting 45 years on something, we should just put solar on it, darn it, you know? So kind of the how it all puzzles together over time, but I think, I think to the point of, some of these just need to be rebuilt makes a lot of sense. And then we can build them in the model of what we need to be climate resilient.
And you raise actually a very good point, and that's one of the things that we've done in the study is for the Fire Department, you know, and the Police Department as well. If if your priorities are stations, you know, one, two, and three, and, you know, just random numbers. If these are your priorities to replace now, and this set of them are good for the next, or we can accept their condition for the next 10 or 15 years, then yes, we make different investment decisions based on that prioritization. If we expect to replace them, we make different decisions based on a replacement, yes.
I am curious, since we're stepping in outside of the questions area. In a situation like this where you have an ideal facility and location for a resilience hub for when you have inclement weather or emergencies. And it's so central to the community, there is a very active neighborhood in the Save Oakley, like, library? And I wonder what it's a look like to activate that people power, to look at a partnership, because they'll want to keep the library there. But is that a chance for us to like coordinate with the county, are we looking at that with resource mapping?
And we have started to engage with the county specifically on this, prepared them for the idea that we are going to present this today, and we're beginning those discussions with the county.
Great, thank you.
It's good to sync up, because when the county did the East Asheville Library, we weren't ready to do the fire station. So they've got this great library and community center, and we have our sad little fire station still there, so.
That does have solar panels, though.
But it does, but you know what?
Like, that was the first station we put panels on, anyway.
Right there. All right, to the last chapter, whether or not it's evident on the surface, there are a number of council plans and priorities that are drivers for facility needs. I've given this slide in the past, and before we get to the beautiful ribbon cutting that's over here on the right side of this presentation, of this slide. Which is about six years away if we were to start today. Some of our larger facilities, I'm sorry, larger priority projects require significant investments in land acquisition. And before that, we need to identify and allocate funding for those projects. As we sequence that out into a large project, let's take a hypothetical, very large project of the $100 million type. Place it about 12 years from now. Again, from the last slide, put that process on it, buy land for that site. Which could happen anytime before, but this is the last point at which we need to have that land acquired so that we don't delay the project. Again, identify and allocate funding. Before all of this happens, or as all of this is happening, we need to do something with the existing space. Whether it's to relocate and expand or renovate those spaces.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Make it be quiet.
And this is the big idea, that while we're waiting for that, we need to occupy and maintain, potentially acquire new space for the staff that is growing in those spaces while we wait for this large project. It's relatively straightforward for one project, and it gets, as we have indicated in discussions, very complicated as we apply that sequence to multiple facilities. With maintenance and growth needs across the board, ambitious goals along the way, and limited resources, but there's opportunity. Opportunity to plan and build great projects that we may never see in our terms of service. This photo of opportunity comes from the balcony of the roof of the seventh floor of City Hall. And opportunity often has a meeting with reality. This picture of reality is from the inside of the seventh floor of City Hall. But we have shown that we have the capability to build great projects with commitment over time. And we can do it again when we start with our why. Our facilities serve those who serve the city. Back with our key takeaways, capacity, again, we are a city that's growing, we need space to meet that growth. We need to commit to maintenance and sustainability to serve the residents and citizens in existing facilities until we can replace them. And to prioritize and sequence, large projects requires a reliable stream of capital funding to help make council priorities a reality. Until then, for the November 14th meeting, we'll talk about those larger plans, we'll be fine-tuning the 20-year sequence with multiple facilities. And fine-tuning our capital budgets for the, the next meeting, as well as the December capital budget, which you'll hear about from finance in December. Again, we'll make facility-type visits available to council members for select sites, and any further questions?
So a couple of things, one, it is, we've highlighted some major facilities here, but to reiterate, your study is across all facilities. So for those watching our coverage about this issue, this is not just a look at the facilities that were mentioned in this presentation, but all city.
All city facilities.
Right.
Yes, exclude, we didn't do water department, and the parking garages have their own assessment.
Because they have their own separate enterprise funds, I assume.
And correct.
Parking garages is very specific to parking garages, but water, yes, they have their own enterprise fund, and that's very specific to that.
So you talked about the annual cost of maintaining status quo being around $3.5 million. So in November, will we see what we think is needed to move us beyond that? To to redoing some of these buildings or building new buildings to accommodate the use?
Yes, we will present a version of reality that may produce the the results that we are, you know, there are pieces, moving parts that can be moved, but we will present one version of that. That shows the moving parts altogether and sequenced.
Okay, and I, I think it was several years ago that council, the then council, voted to earmark, and I'm trying to remember, it might have been like 2.3 pennies? Or some, some amount of property tax revenue every year towards, at that time, it was towards new capital. It wasn't for city facilities, I don't believe. But is, are we thinking about that kind of framework, since it's being presented in terms of, well, it's being presented in millions of dollars? So we don't, and the property tax revenue changes year to year, what what a penny will net. So, but some type of long-term commitment because of the debt service needed. I assume that's what we're, what the, what we'll be looking at.
Well, I think there's two buckets, right? There's the, we're paying a million right now for maintenance, we need to get 3.5, and that could be a commitment, but debt service is different, we still might need a million for me. is different, we still might need a million for muni, and that's a whole different financial conversation.
Oh, I thought the three and a half million included debt service.
Oh, gosh.
I'm just showing the need.
Yeah, so it could, it could, I mean, because you have pay-as-you-go and debt service.
If we could do all that, two million a year.
I'd be surprised if we'd be able to get a million-dollar building, but, well.
No, 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 I'm not, you, you, as I understand this presentation, three and a half million is the annual cost to maintain the status quo of our facilities, it is not building anything new.
Right.
And it could be debt service if you're doing some significant something or other, like buying an HVAC unit to maintain a building.
Those are capital assets.
You might debt finance that, and that'll be part of the debt service, anyway, whatever, however you get to the three and a half million, it could be a combination of things.
Yeah, Taylor Floyd, Budget Manager, Mayor, I think what you just said is, is accurate.
It might be your mortgage payment, and you put a new roof on the house, so you, that year, you shelled it out for the new roof.
But you wouldn't build a new building with it.
No, no, we think three and a half million is to maintain our C status.
That's right.
How we, how we choose, whether we choose to finance that or not, is kind of something that we'll look at as part of our capital.
Project-based or need-based, yep.
So, so what, what I'm assuming, you haven't given us the number, but I assume in November, we're going to see a number that says, here's keeping status quo, and plus, we're going to, you know.
Buildings X, Y, Z.
Do these buildings, and here's the, the additional financial annual commitment you only need to make.
Yeah, my concern is for Walter's plans for, for November, but I will say, that'll be part of the conversation that we have in December.
I'm just trying to make sure our, the preview is sufficiently previewing us.
Yeah, this is a preview, remember, we say we're going to dig the hole, and then we're going to dig ourselves out of the hole, and provide as part of the plan, sequences of priorities and needs, and we say, these things need to be in the first one to five, these need to be in the longer term, so yes, we will provide all of that information, and please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, Jay Dunn, this is Capital Projects Director, absolutely right, what we'll walk through in November is showing you a sequence of projected projects, where will reflect those numbers, and those, those costs is in the budget, as we submit the budget, it's going to reflect those, that sequence of needed projects, and that will be in front of council with the capital budget presentation recommendations, and it will reflect five years of budgeting to be able to accomplish that vision.
So, just in the Venn diagram of capital, the capital projects that we're looking at, it seems like some of these projects might be appropriate to be pulled into a geo-bond referendum, for example, you could have a public safety geo-bond that addresses some of the fire station needs, you know, just as an example, so are you, are you thinking about, not all of them are appropriate for bonds, obviously, they're just needs that we need to manage as a city, but where there's that opportunity?
That's right, and when Walter said this is a version of what the, the projections look like, it allows us the flexibility to identify projects that are in that 20-year plan, that are better suited for bond funding, and bring those forward potentially, and then that just, that just adjusts the 20-year plan, so truly trying to find, match the funding sources to the projects that fit those funding sources will be an exercise that we work through this year and, and every year that we're trying to evaluate the budget.
And this definitely is, again, data, source of information for when we're thinking about the geo-bond, we can look at it holistically, we can look at the traditional infrastructure, capital needs of the community, parking rec needs, whatever, but also, if you don't hear a message, please hear this one. It was the slide that says, our employees serve, and we need to have appropriate and adequate space to do our jobs, to serve the community, because ultimately, we know our role, our role is to serve, however, I went on the tours of, and, and I hope that you all get an opportunity to, to, to look at some of the space needs that we have. I think we should, we could, we need to do better in terms of providing the space for us to, to do our best, I mean, to perform, to be a high-performing organization.
I want to stay with your analogy that we're going to dig ourselves a hole and then get out of it, it feels like we talked about a hole that we're going to dig, like there's something bigger coming, but I just want to take a second to say, Walter, your, your rap on the, the very end, when you wrapped it up about the opportunity, I appreciated the way you told that story, I think the way that we talk about providing quality, equitable service outcomes, and being able to have the space to do it, is so important when we're getting ready to go to the public and ask for funds, while they're also seeing these same kinds of situations in their homes and workplaces, I'm also like holding that duality of, I just went to St. Louis, and there's so many empty buildings, so that's why I'm really curious about, like, what are the ways that we might not have imagined using spaces for more than one purpose? Because we've been so good at doing it already, I know that we need to think about opportunity, but we also could stay creative, and so I just wanted to say thank you for the, the way that you told that story, I thought was really powerful.
Kim, was those buildings public up front?
Both. The city is what, like, lost 60% of its population?
St. Louis, well, it's, yeah, all the Rust Belt cities have atrophied, it's just outside the Rust Belt, but they, but the pandemic has atrophied.
Empty parts, empty office spaces, empty commercial, empty, everything.
Yeah, we're lucky that we, our city is not so highly dependent on that mix, but cities that have really suffered that are in that situation, but it's, I mean, food for thought, because who knew when everyone was building like crazy back in the day that they would be rattling around with empty spaces in those cities?
Another question of, I appreciate how well, Deborah, you're having the team set up the big picture for us to look at this, another element that comes to mind and is in the mix at some point is our real estate assessment, so where these facilities are is a big question too for me, right? So eventually, we're going to get to the point where it's like, XYZ facility, we might need to rebuild, and then that opens the question of where, and does it stay on the site, and so it would be magic if you're dovetailing all of that, and I bet you're intending to do that, but is there any like preview to help me understand, like, how you're thinking about some of that layering?
Right, so for public safety, we did a location analysis for police and fire, there are a few facilities for the fire department that could be adjusted, and there is, we did envision that, for larger facilities, for, let's say, example, the transit garage, or the public works facility, we did also do in 2021, an analysis of what it would take to move that operation, right, there is a large number of people that move in and out, and a large number of buses, current and future, that we project to, to be moving to a location, and we have assessed that as well, and that also plays a little bit into the, the 20-year plan that we're going to present.
Are we at all looking at the, or considering the moving the facilities on Charlotte Street? Are we anticipating recommendations from our advisory boards about that?
It'll be in November, that's going to be in the version of reality, I'm not sure if we're presenting those to any other boards at this time.
Right, long and short, yes, we are looking at that, but we're also looking at it in terms of a time horizon, when would it, or if it would be feasible in terms of time, so is it two years? Probably not, maybe, whatever, so that's, that's the analysis that we are looking at.
Yeah, I feel the tension in this conversation, and the part of it, I think, is, we did have a conversation earlier today about the services that we provide, but also, there's conversations about when we raise property taxes, and who pays the most, and, and we don't have our hotel occupancy taxes, but these services are provided for, also for our daytime population, not just for the people who live here.
Agreed.
So it's, it's, I feel that tension, and I appreciate that we're going slow, but we are going to have to rip the Band-Aid off, so stay tuned for November, then?
Yeah, we'll stay for November. Again, we, we're building a base of information, and for us, you all, to, we'll, we'll be making recommendations, but for you all to make informed decisions, these are significant financial investments, but there are significant needs as well, and again, I will go back and I will say this slide more appropriately, our facilities serve those who serve, and so as we are thinking about, you know, our needs going forward, particularly our capital assets, that we not forget about the space where our people work, and where we deliver services, I mean, it's not cool to have customers coming to some of our facilities as well, so, yeah.
Great work.
Thank you, may I say one more thing?
Sure.
It takes a number of people to workshop these slides, and I just want to acknowledge all the great city staff, our consultant, Creations Associates, Brightly Software, and others that have seen and helped fine-tune these slides, thank you to all of them.
I just imagined you did them all.
I'm certainly not that smart.
So you weren't the architect of the Pinto?
That one, that one was me.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so unless there's anything further, that concludes this work session, and we have about 30 minutes until the city council meeting starts.
Thank you all for your attention.
Let me just make sure Dan will take us off the air.